All right, it is 5:15 on September 19th, 2023. I will call the meeting to order. Jane, will you do roll call, please?
Rudolph?
Here.
Shaven?
Here.
Kroger?
Here.
Bielefeld?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Lindberg?
Here.
And we've all been given the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion, second.
Motion by Bielefeld, second by Lindberg.
Birds.
Birds are in.
Roll call, Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Bielefeld?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
And at this time state any conflicts or along the way if they would appear into your minds and you think you're conflicted. And then before we go on to the consent agenda, although we do this all in one motion, but we will do that through A through D. We will hold off on E and then have a separate discussion with E. So I will go through the first four like we normally do and then we'll wait on E and have a discussion and do a separate motion on that one. So under the consent agenda, we have the minutes of September 5th, council meeting, claims list number 1298, the amount of $86,339.63. Everybody had a chance to see some of the larger ones that were on there. Any questions, concerns, any of those?
I had my questions answered earlier, so.
Okay. Expenditure and revenue reports for the month of August of 2023 and the share statistical report for August of 2023. Are there motion for those items?
Motion, second.
Motion by Kroger, second by Rudolph.
Roll call, Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Bielefeld?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
And then we would address item E, the approval of the new 2324 cigarette, tobacco, nicotine vape vapor permit for establishment twisted smoke. And I think the gentleman who is opening that business is here. Is Aaron Sands, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
If you have, want to address the council? Does anybody have questions for him?
I'm one of the owners of twisted smoke. We've got a couple, I spoke to this gentleman the other day. We've got one in Carter Lake, Iowa and Lundwood. This community don't have one, so we'll see if we can come here.
He's got a mobile one, too?
Yes, sir.
Good. What's that do, just travel?
That's the one in Carter Lake.
Oh, okay.
No space available for rent, so just ran out of the bus.
So you don't have cigarettes or tobacco, it's just fake products?
There will be no cigarettes, no chew.
Okay.
Correct. So it'll be fake products, CBD products, that kind of thing.
What made you want to branch out to Harlan?
A lot of our customers are here. We get a lot of customers coming from Harlan. My business partner actually works in a boat that Titan.
Okay.
And so we get a lot of customers that call and say, hey, bring us the Titan, I'll meet you there. We just have one here.
Do you guys sell anything besides baked products?
So CBD delta products, they'll be, you know, your tobacco accessories, different mods for their E liquid juice. We do sell some soda. Other than that, no, not really.
Do you guys allow anybody under the age of 21 in your facility?
No.
Okay.
They'll be after 21. We do actually spend an extra money to read the right ID if it is fake. We keep the ID, give you a couple creepy, turn the ID in. Then we pull the video footage. We've had that happen once in the last year and a half.
So you guys are pretty proactive with keeping some minors out of there and stuff?
Oh, yes.
Appreciate that.
That's one thing we do focus on. A lot of people look at us differently because minors are the ones that are getting them somehow. And that's what's causing the biggest issue. We don't carry any bake that looks like a toy. No markers, no nothing. It's just, it's just a regular bake. A lot of parents, adults have switched to it because it does, doesn't stink, cigarettes stink. So they've just kind of went for that. Have we tried to take them off?
You said you plan to add some security?
Security system.
System, okay.
Yes. So we'll have cameras. Our POS system will bring up their ID if it is fake and we can't sell to you. They have to be 21 to be in the store. We hire 21 and above. That's my question.
Okay.
Good deal. Well, cool. Sounds like you're taking the proactive steps for me, so I have no further questions.
Appreciate you coming up and talking to us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Then I would ask, is there a motion for item E, approval of permit for twisted smoke? Motion.
Second.
Motion by Peterson and second by Lindberg.
Roll call, Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Bielefeld?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Welcome to Harlan.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, guys.
Yep. Item three, other businesses receive and file planning and zoning commission minutes from August 29th of 2023. Everybody have a chance to take a look at those? Is there a motion for the minutes?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Kroger, second by Peterson.
Roll call, Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Bielefeld?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
And I think out of that meeting, we have a resolution number 2542 to approve 2023 comprehensive plan for the city of Harlan. I'll look to Jean's chair. I think Danielle's on the phone, but I'll let Jean maybe give an intro and a lot of time and effort into this.
Yes, I'll provide a few introductory comments. A few of you were at the planning and zoning meeting last week. That was published as required by ordinance and this has been a long time coming. Danny will speak to a couple of hiccups through this process and over the past week, there's been somewhat of a flurry of activity and Danielle's been phenomenal in responding to some of the updates as a few entities wanted to make some more fine tuning and I'm sure Danielle will speak to all those. That was very helpful. Going back to the primary, two primary purposes that this document serves, and we're calling it our Harlan 2040, as you've seen in the last updates, is that the last one was updated in 2010, so approximately every 10 years, your plan is updated. And many times when looking to seek funds and grants, especially on the federal and sometimes state level, this is one of the items that is important to be able to check the box that has your community gone through a visioning and conferency plan process. And then secondly, a key component in terms of community growth and development is your land use, your current land use and your future land use. And so the planning and zoning has gone, you know, had a handful of meetings over the past year and a half as to, you know, for the outlying areas that are still within municipal limits, what are the intended uses of that property, which again is in the plan. I can't recall exactly which of the 61 pages, but again, that's the two primary purposes that the document serves. And with that, I'll turn over to Danny to provide an overview and address any questions you have.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Danny Briggs with Southwest State of Danny Council. I know several of you in the room and as you know, we have been working on this for quite a while now. We started, we're trying to start it in 2020 and we were immediately delayed due to COVID. We were unable to hold meetings as we had wanted. And then we were delayed again as I went on maternity leave in early 2021. We put together another steering committee and after being able to meet with that group a couple of times, we did put out a community-wide survey in June of 2021. That survey was put out in both English and Spanish and we received 388 responses on that. After that, we met with planning and zoning in November as well as held more steering committee meetings. And then in early 2022, we held two public meetings where we invited people to come and provide input on survey responses, help draft some goals and objectives to include in the plan. We asked them to help us complete a SWOT analysis. And throughout all that time, we were also reaching out to different service, services within the community such as water. We've reached out to HMU. We gather information on the sewer press system, streets, planned projects for that, parks and rec, the hospital, all the schools, things like that. After those meetings and collecting some of that data, we met several more times with the steering committee and worked to set goals based on what we had got from the survey and from our public meetings and using their knowledge of the town and what they thought would be best for the community. So as you can see, there's been several moving parts to this plan and lots of collaboration with different parties. So it has been a long process, but I think it has come together nicely. And then within the last couple of weeks and even, even today, I was making a few tweaks to the plan. So I'm not sure that you have the fully updated one or not, but the last tweaks were very minor to the hospital section. So I think everyone got their changes in and how they wanted it. So hopefully everyone will be happy with it.
To your comment there, Danny, yesterday you all received the changes that came out of the planning and zoning meeting, which again were specific to Western Community College, the expansion of the hospital with the emergency room and the other two. And then as of today, there were some just minor grammatical changes and formatting changes in the hospital section. So, but there's no other changes from what you received yesterday. So that's what she's referencing there. The plan we have is essentially complete.
Anybody have any questions for her or Jean?
This will be, as I spoke to with planning and zoning, and it will be refreshing to have a plan that most of us have touched as we go into our annual budgeting and looking towards our capital projects. Another key component to this is the implementation area, which this is a document like many, many others that get created, that as soon as it's published, something changes. This is intended to be fluid, so, but there is an area in here called the implementation matrix. And this had a lot of collaboration from the steering committee, some other groups that, in this implementation matrix, there's already a few in here that we need to adjust some dates on already. Some we can check off, Todd's office, HMU, but this will be excellent to have a play sheet that, you know, over the, you know, one to three, three to five, five plus years that we can go back to on this matrix, say how are we doing, what do we need to adjust, what do we still need to implement. So I would draw your attention, if you've not already looked at those, to those two pages. And that's all the comments I have as well, unless you have questions for Danny and I and just, you know, hats off through this process, for all the collaboration and the parties that have invested in this.
Do we publish this document on our website?
We will, with our new website, easy to hang it out there and then, you know, I don't think it's as easy to get it to the current website, but definitely will be on the website.
To answer the questions, 46.4 is our average age for our previous conversation.
Yeah.
We're just not. We're talking for this curiosity.
Most possibly.
Yes, interesting. I found it very intriguing to be on part of the committee. I think it's nice to get to hear a lot of other views from other people on the committee and their viewpoints and experiences and thoughts.
That's a lot of data in there.
Yeah.
I hope I'm still around in 2040. Not here.
You're in the next, next 10 years.
You'll be in the steering committee for 2040?
Yeah.
Me, too.
Okay, is there a motion for resolution 2542?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Rudolph, second by Shaven.
Roll call, Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Bielefeld?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item B is to review the noise variance permit for Shelby County Speedway, tiny Lund night at the Speedway. And that's, is it next weekend? Because on the application, it showed the 22nd and 29th or whatever it was, is two nights, two weekends or just one weekend?
It goes over midnight. It goes over midnight to the next.
Yeah. So we're into the next.
Sorry, the 22nd getting to the 28th.
Probably have extended for, guys that want to.
So 22nd and 23rd?
22nd and 23rd.
So Friday, Saturday is spent in previous years.
I think this is us this week.
Oh, good.
Yeah, this weekend. The next weekend's.
Friday night, program starts at 6:00. The Saturday night program, they have a few more styles of cars and they start earlier at 4:00. And it's usually the Friday night program that can kind of extend over. And I think they still have a concert playing that night, too.
On Friday night?
Yeah, they do a concert kind of down in the pit.
They've done music the last couple of years, as you may recall, which is why they've had the extension up to 2:00 AM. They have no, we've had law enforcement down there, I'm sure Sheriff will be down in the area of them as well, but even previous to PD, we've had a few issues.
I've had no complaints in my word, so.
Business then boom for you then?
No.
It's pretty respectful. Negative indicator, right?
No, it's good.
I think they do a good job.
Yeah, I think they're a pretty, pretty respectful crowd, you know. Sometimes things get ugly, but it's get control people.
It's amazing, some nights you don't hear it.
And the nights it's like right outside the doors.
The weather winds.
Yeah.
It's the wind.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the noise variance permit?
A motion.
Second.
Motion by Lindberg, is that Mr. Peterson?
You.
Second by you, Peterson.
Roll call, Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Bielefeld?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
City administrators report.
Handful of items and updates, just to carry on with the Speedway application for the noise variance. Obviously, Mother Nature may adjust that during forecast for the weekend. So that was quite a damper on the racetrack and races, so I guess just ask for the community's awareness of that and if there needs to be changes there, I'll ask that they communicate those to us if any adjustments happen there. The county engineer, just want to pass this along, and I don't know if there's information in the paper or on social media yet, but this Saturday from 9:00 to 11:00 at the engineer's office is the annual household hazardous waste disposal. So any household items that need to be disposed of, it's a free disposal. Just take them out the engineer's office on Industrial Avenue. If you're questioning at all if it's an eligible item, just call the engineer's office at 755-5954. And just want to pass that along from what the landfill manager and engineer passed along this morning. We, with your approval last meeting, we did get the code enforcement position posted. We've had very, we've had some interest, one official application thus far, and the application deadline is next Tuesday at 5:00 PM. So we've got a week left in that process, so hopeful to see a few more candidates. It's a tough market out there, yet it's not unlike some of these positions to see applications come in late either. If they're either procrastinators or pulling together some reference information, et cetera. That's an update on the code enforcement position. And we've had some questions and just general curiosity, just wanted to update you all as well as the community on, it's exciting with the new businesses we've had open up and construction happen and remodeling. And with that comes some, unfortunately, some slightly things at times, post-construction cleanup, maybe things don't get tended to as quickly as we'd like. And so working with Dollar General, as they're still doing some final rating, we've seen some new equipment out there this week. So working with them on those final cleanup items as well as getting rid of some weeds, some final planning and seeding, similar with Dollar Tree, Family Dollar. And we've been told that they're be opening sometime this week. We heard it one time tomorrow, but they had a lot of trucks in there with merchandise. Todd may have an update to that if we still have it tomorrow or not.
Early, we heard Wednesday, one of the people who's Shelby for them mentioned that they think it's probably going to be Thursday.
Again, just want to pass along to you that, you know, we're well aware of those things and one of the phrases or adages you may have heard me say is that we sometimes have short-term pain for some long-term gain. But if you have questions, concerns or things that you may want to know about or want to be sure they're tended to, do not hesitate to contact City Hall, contact me directly. Todd will pass those along as well to ensure that those items are being addressed.
Weeds are gone at Dollar General?
Are they?
It might be a little muddy there right now, but.
It'll be a little muddy right there. They're gone right now, but, okay. With nicer weather, the streets department has been pretty aggressive with ash trees over the last week and a half. Also, update from a previous streets meeting that the handicap, approved handicap spot in front of Milk and Honey is being placed. They're getting the pole in the ground this week. But again, that was a spotlight for Milk and Honey previously approved through streets and the council. And the street department will be getting out some different color paint to ensure that handicap stall is properly marked. Still waiting on, I reached out to the State Aviation Bureau just this week again. We've been told we've been awarded the grant for the hangar doors on Hangar 3 for some additional hydro swing doors, yet don't have those documents yet. Waiting, receiving the information before they'll be in front of the airport commission and you. There was a streets meeting yesterday, streets alleys meeting yesterday, which some of you as committee members, some of you were there, want to pass along to all of you, a few of the highlights as well as the community. We met with the engineers and reviewed the study for the fourth and main structure. And at this time, the committee's review of that is due to cost constraints and not having any other viable approved alternatives, that one option was a $700,000 structure and the other was an $800,000 structure. And for the time being, the committee, the direction is just to hold off for now. We're going to reach out to some other resources to see if there are some alternative structures and bids that will be approved. There's a lot of nuances in this, not being in, actually, it's not actually in the floodplain. Also, it doesn't fall within two square miles. The engineers and consultants gave us some good guidance there and I talked to the DNR twice on that. But it's in a holding pattern right now and no action's being taken on that structure. We'll continue to remain close for the, for the time being. And then we also updated the committee that is in the committee packet, that there's been recent interest in, due to some concerns on safety of Highway 44, which is four lane. And this has been looked at a few times in the past as to ways to improve safety all the way from radar speed signs or the speed display signs as well as conversion, consideration conversion from four lane to three lane, which exists on Highway 59 as well as Cyclone Avenue, which used to be four lane. More or less updated the committee, the DOT has reached out to us on that due to some conversations they've had with some citizens. And we'll be setting up more, I'll be talking with them further, so you can expect likely another committee meeting in order to proceed at some point, not in the near future, but I would say midterm, with those things that we proceed with. There'd be certainly some community meetings and business meetings about, you know, impacts, questions regarding conversion of that, especially if it's four lane to three lane. The speed signaling signs, there's actually a DOT program that, or can provide a few of those under cost. And although the city would eventually take those over and have to maintain those, seems like a no-brainer and I think that would improve safety as well. The DOT can review that with us for that program as well. Couple of other updates, just reminder, and I know a few of you were discussing this before the meeting, that this is for the community as well, that papers and nomination papers are due Thursday at 5:00.
Five.
Correct, Jean?
Yes.
So I'm sure that that, if you're receiving signatures, that's for the positions that some of you sit in and some of you are, I understand, rerunning, but also for others that may be considering that. Want to put another reminder out there because I know a lot of people that watch this and these reruns, that again, the EMS essential service vote will be on the November 7th ballot. The community meeting, there are five community meetings, informational meetings throughout the county, and the one for Harlan is scheduled Thursday, October 5th at 7:00 PM. There was a banner ad in today's paper. It's out on the county's, the EMA's Facebook page, where those meetings in Defiance, Panama, Elkhorn, Shelby and Harlan. They're all at 7:00 PM and most of those other communities, they're at their community Great opportunity to learn more about that important vote and the essential need for continuation of that service.
7:00 in Harlan?
7:00 in Harlan, the Ferguson Center on Thursday, October 5th. Thank you. And last two items I have are on a somber note, but our prayers and thoughts go out to the entire community of Algonia that lost a police officer, Kevin Cram, in the line of duty. And it touches communities, it touches law enforcement. And our thoughts and prayers go out to that group. So I want to be sure that they feel that. I've reached out to them individually and expect to see bar above our league conference. So I just want to keep the community of Algonia, lift them up at this time. And lastly, which I just referenced, that tomorrow begins the annual League of Cities Conference. Jane and I will be attending and I know next year it's coming over this side of the state. Would love to see some of our elected officials, you know, to the annual conference, a great opportunity to learn and network. And Jane and I will be heading over there for Thursday at 5:00, actually starts tomorrow.
Where's it at this year?
Cedar Rapids.
Cedar Rapids.
And it's down on the eastern side of the state. It's about every four, five, six, probably every five or six years, it gets back more to the western side or even central. So certainly bringing important highlights and information back and great networking opportunity for not only us, but for others, that you can participate in that in the future. And with that, any comments or questions that you have for me?
Doesn't sound like it.
I actually have a follow-up real quick on that, the streets committee yesterday on our fourth and main, the road closed structure. I think we advised there was a road closed sign up on Cyclone. There is, actually is not.
Okay, I'll look into that.
In reference, just to see, because I just was curious.
Previously, we also previously disappeared.
Okay, well, maybe that's the case. I just, I just want to see a truck or somebody pulling down there and have to, that's a long way to back up and back up, so just curious.
Thank you for that feedback, we'll look into it.
Thank you, Todd.
Sorry, I haven't opened it.
That's appropriate.
All right, thanks, Jean. Under my report, I would move on to Shelby County Chamber of Commerce and Industry with Todd Green, an update.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Josh.
Just a few events to make you aware of and a couple other updates. So Thursday, September 24th, is going to be the Walk for Suicide Prevention. That's going to be at Pioneer Park, start at noon, and that's sponsored by the Merchant Medical Center, Senior Life Solutions. So if you can come down and join the walk, that would be appreciated. Tuesdays, September 26th, at 6:00, we're going to have a ribbon cutting ceremony at a new business here in Shelby County called Rosa Belanda Farms. And it's located at 1027 1400th Street here in Harlan. So if you knew where Mike and Marilyn Roseman used to live, it's that property. They purchased the property, they are going to try to make it the best agri-payment location in all of Iowa. So what they've done is they planted an orchard, they've got a corn maze out there right now, they've got a pumpkin patch that they're selling pumpkins out of, they've got an Airbnb, they've got this really cool jump pad, it's like down in the ground for kids to jump on. There's a lot going on and they look to add a lot. just a lot going on, and they look to add a lot more, so they're going to have, we're going to have that ribbon-cutting for them on the 26th at 6:00. And then on the 30th, they're having their grand opening, they'll have a live band out there, including entertainment, things going on. And then they mentioned to me they're hoping to have a live band every weekend through the month of October, so we'll see how it goes, but they're out of Utah, they still don't live physically here, so they're just flying back and forth right now, taking care of all this stuff, but it's going to be, it'll be a really good addition to Shelby County. If you have an event for the fourth quarter, and you want to make a Hotel Montel grant request, we need to have those in our office by September 29th at 5:00. The meeting will be the second week of October to review the grants that are in and award the money. And then also, there's a kind of a special program taking place at the high school, at the high school on Thursday, October 12th from 9:00 to 3:00, and at the middle school on Friday, October 13th from 9:00 to 3:00. And it's called Rachel's Challenge, and so this is a program that you go through, and you talk a lot about things like peer pressure, alcohol, drugs, suicide, things like that. And what they're looking for is they need multiple adults to volunteer, to pretty much match up with the kids and go through the program with them together. The idea is that, you know, to get some interaction from community leaders with the kids while they're there, so they get to know you more than just, as they may know you as the store owner, or, you know, as the person out on the street. And then the idea is for the adults that go through this program, they'll be able to then take what they've learned out into the community and introduce it to their friends and to their coworkers.
What was the date on?
If you have an opportunity to get ahold of Brenda Renter at the high school, she's providing a volunteer friend. And then the last thing, the downtown lights, which picked up again, we did get a estimate on the repairs last week, that estimate has been turned into the insurance company, I'm just waiting for them to respond, but hopefully be able to get that corrected here. Those are lights up on the north side and on the west side, those lights that are not functioning properly right now.
What was the date and time of the suicide awareness walk?
It's at the high school, it's October 12th. Oh, the suicide awareness, sorry.
Yes.
It's at noon on Thursday.
Noon on Thursday.
At Pioneer Park.
Okay, thanks, Todd.
Thanks.
HMU, Joe Rouschenberg.
Hello, everyone?
Howdy.
Got several items here, just trying to give you updates on. As far as the water project, three river bores are complete. Well-drilling contractor is still on scheduled leave for like October 2nd, being in town to start, start on the four wells. They're talking maybe about a week per well, as far as get those drilled and done. And then, of course, we'll have the wellhouses and pumps and everything after that, but they're looking at about a week's worth of work there for each well. McCarthy Trenching continues to install water mains, you know, services for the wells. Water department's almost complete with the field entrance installation, they're doing there off of Maple Avenue, that we did receive a permit from the city. That's about done, they're just backfilling that, just after the rain today, a little bit a while before they get, you know, an inch and a half?
Yeah, it rained hard for a while, I don't know the exact...
And then should be starting on, also filling in the ditch along Utility Avenue, next door to the looms there, and we're going to try to fill that ditch in so we can maintain it. Probably move on to that at some point here, that'll be a fall project here also. We had a consultant in town here last week, they're doing a leak survey for our water mains. He found several leaks that will be repaired by the water department in the next couple weeks also, several that he found, some of them felt pretty good size, so we'll get right on those and try to keep on top of that, so that'll help our water trench also. Oh, have a call-in for Ashley with HomeServe, going to try to get her to present at our September 28th, we're going to pursue the board members and decide, you know, as far as how they want to pursue the debt, at least we guys have answered it, hopefully after our September repeating. Lastly, too, we've been working on kind of updating our HMU clothing policy and our allowance, so you might see kind of a different look with our employees. We're going to all retro-reflective clothing for all departments, and then our electric, gas, and water departments will have FR or flame department material also. I think it's been kind of a long, long time coming, you know, safety-wise, I mean, reflective, just so you can see when they're out on the streets, kind of what the street department does, but also the FR, you know, make sure that that stuff is turned in yearly, just so it's, you know, kept up to where that's actually, you know, the FR is still viable in that material, you know, like some of that, kind of the way the allowance was going in the past, you know, they would buy, but, you know, I don't think they were keeping up on the FR equipment, so it's a big safety issue, I think, that we're going to get on top of now and keep on top of it moving forward, so. So you'll see kind of a different look, it'll be that retro-reflective, kind of the yellow or the lime green, you know, be able to see them from a ways. And then we're going to go ahead and load home, too, but instead of the shield, we're just going to use kind of just the H here on the shoulder of those libraries, so I at least, you can see, you know, the department there, like that they're with utilities. Long time coming, I think, on that, so it's a good thing. Any questions?
No, there was a concerned citizen that reached out to the city administrator about your water leak guy driving around town, so just making sure he was legit, so...
Oh, yeah, yeah. And it's kind of funny, he's got a Challenger...
Yeah, he was driving a pretty fancy car with some lights on it.
He shoves his, you know, puts everything in the front seat.
Yeah. It looked kind of official, but it was kind of like, yeah, oh, maybe, but it was all taken care of, the fears were all calmed, so...
And he does a good job, too, I've heard, you know, in the past, I think there was a leak sometime back, over Forts Bowers over there, couldn't find, I think it was coming up through the cracks, he pinpointed it on the concrete, they dug down and he was...
Right on.
He does a good job.
Awesome.
And so we try to stay after, he did it once a year.
How long does it take him to do it?
I think he was here three, three days last week, working on it, so, I mean, he was right along. Granted, he's only doing the ductile iron or the old cast iron means that they don't really have the technology yet to be able to hear, that sound won't travel, you know, on plastic pipe.
PVC.
So, I mean, hopefully there's some technology coming up, going in the future, I think, we're trying to try to pinpoint stuff on plastic or PVC means, but right now, he just does all the ductile iron or the cast iron.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we have the Shelby County Sheriff's update, which, we all have the report, so I guess...
Hey, guys, Jake Goss, had six accidents, sixteen tickets, 137 warnings, two dozen arrests or so, $1,500 just patrolled in the area, so we're staying busy around, wrapping up the final pieces of our ETO program, but all of our continuing guys, just got done with that, pretty happy. We're fully staffed, but unfortunately, we're down one guy, now the school started, so...
Hey.
You guys keep in track, but he does a phenomenal job over there, it was an amazing job, so. Pretty much all we got, our dogs get certified next week, or next month.
Like a recert?
Yeah, annual recert, so...
We have two or three, or you guys have?
Currently, we have two.
Two, okay.
Which dog gets certified?
So the Enzo, the old city dog, yep. And Lee White is his handler, you know, police department officer here, ended up becoming a handler over there, it's his half the certifications of Heartland America, Blue Stock Association. We, first week of October, and the last five years straight, we've grabbed home awards, so he's got a big shoes to fill.
It is.
Any other questions?
Does Enzo get a ceremony if he graduates?
Uh, that's up to him.
We could probably figure something out.
Who gets a Facebook recognition, like with the award, the picture?
Pummy cake, or... Yeah, we'll get something figured out. Pop cup or something, you know.
Do you want to comment, just briefly with the sheriff, we were talking briefly before the meeting with the two officers that are getting...
So we have two, currently, we have two uncertified guys in our office, right, there's seventeen people now, two of them are uncertified. One of them is originally from Logan, did some time in service, once he finished his time in service with the Air Force, he moved to Arizona with his family. He was on Phoenix Police Department correctly, about a year, decided he missed the whole life, so wanted to come back to the Midwest. His mom actually lives in Harlan now, so he's got to get, he's got to go to the academy at some point in time for some certification, I'm not exactly sure what the whole process is, but I think he's going to be there for about a week, takes some tests in Penang, get the, pay okay from the academy's council. And then another guy we hired, is originally from the West Harrison area, and he goes the first part of January for his academy, so end of April, so he'll be certified. Anything else?
Thank you.
See you, George.
George, thank you.
Any comments from the public? Isn't that what Jesse came?
Moral support.
Comments from this side of the table?
Not today.
What over here?
Hot Geiser 3-0.
I know, bike night is Thursday night.
Oh, yeah, just the last one, bike night, Thursday night.
Thursday night.
Hopefully the weather's, it's been great all summer long, so hopefully it gives them one more night of great weather.
I think it's veterans' night this month, I believe.
It is, yeah. The last one is always a veteran's.
It's been well-attended all summer long.
Good to hear.
Seth Johansson is the main driving force behind that, and he's done a nice job, so... Okay, nothing else, meeting adjourned.